On both the Alpha and Bravo ships, the Inspection Services Bureau and the On both the Alpha and Bravo ships, the Inspection Services Bureau and the Rain Station Charlie shift with steadfast dedication. He was promoted to Lieutenant Colonel and assigned to Ridgeway Station Administration where he continued to uphold the highest On both the Alpha and Bravo ships, the Inspection Services Bureau and the Rain Station Charlie shift with steadfast dedication. He was promoted to Lieutenant Colonel and assigned to Ridgway Station Administration where he continued to uphold the highest standards of leadership and
Whereas on July 21st, 2015, Joe Oakley was appointed to the rank of Colonel And served with distinction in Airway Station and Mount Moray Station Administration. And whereas on August 9th, 2021, Joe Oakley was appointed Deputy Chief of Information Technology where he provided strategic guidance and oversight essential to the department's technological advance And
Close it up. Whereas on October 31st, 2025, Deputy Chief Oakley retired from the Memphis Police Department after 30 Six years of services, two years younger than me, including a career marked by exemplary service, outstanding leadership and dedication to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Memphis.
21, Joe Oakley was appointed Deputy Chief of Information Technology where he provided strategic guidance and oversight essential to the department's technological advancement and
Close it up. Whereas on October 31st, 2025, Deputy Chief Oakley retired from the Memphis Police Department after 36 years of services, two years younger than me, including a career marked by exemplary service, outstanding leadership and dedication to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Memphis. On November 1st, 2025, he was sworn in as a reserve officer, kept going, Reserve Officer Volunteer on Details for the Safety of Special Events and Technology Support. Deputy Chief Oakley is married to Leah and enjoys traveling, fishing, and training his family's rescue dog, Parker. Now therefore be resolved and Memphis City Council hereby recognizes and honors Deputy Chief Joe Oakley on his retirement from the Memphis Police Department following an exceptional career. Steadfast devotion to public service given at our hand, the Memphis City Council. Thank you.
Wow. Well, first of all, I want to thank All of you for this. It was quite unexpected. I think there wasn't a day gone by in the past 10 years that I wasn't either on the phone with some of you or email to work out Issues, get you cameras, crime data, etc. So it was fun. We had a good time. So we introduced my wife Leah for the past 10 years. She's been my cheerleader And my sister-in-law Shayla who's a Judicious Commissioner and she's also running for judge. So vote for Shayla and my And my great brother-in-law Fish. So and so without my family, wouldn't have been where I was. My dad He was a policeman. That's why I'm here. So thank you very much.
We need to do a shoot.
But you gotta wait this long, huh? First of all, thirty-eight years, thirty-six years.
Wow. Look at him. I believe that though.
Councilman Ford, come on.
This is my buddy. Miss Baby, give her some coffee. Are we ready?
Hey, Oakley.
Oakley.
One more, one more.
It's not Becky, it's not Becky, it's not Becky, it's not Becky.
One, two, three. Got it.
God, thank you. Thank all of you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, Michelle.
Gonna miss you.
I know you will. You're going to.
He gonna miss me, pal.
I am. That's why I brought y'all up. Oh, miss.
Congratulations. Enjoy.
Appreciate it. Hey, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Bet you do.
I think the world of that guy, you know that.
Yeah.
Or if you don't, I got something to admit.
Madam Camp Controller, would you please call item number two?
Item number two is a resolution approving the closure of a portion of Louisiana Street extending south from its intersection with West Macklemore Avenue. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is SAC twenty-five dash zero four.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation for this item, and I so moved.
Item two was moved by Smiley Junior and seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Green, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you.
Madam Camp Controller, would you please take us to the MLGW fiscal consent items five through twenty-one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Note that there are two items, Madam Camp Controller, that were-
For same night minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution awarding contract number one-two-six-five-nine, MLGW Control Center Planning and Designing Services to Robert E. Lamb in the funded amount of five million, one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Item number six is a resolution awarding contract number one-two-six-five-six, Transmission Planning Process Interconnection Study Support and Facility Rating Support and Advisory Services to GDS Associates, Inc. in the funded amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Item number seven is a resolution approving renewal to contract number one-two-four-zero-eight, Environmental Consulting Services with BHNM Environmental Consultants, Incorporated. To renew the current contract in the funded not to exceed amount of eight million, four hundred thousand dollars. Item number eight is a resolution approving renewal to contract number one-two-four-four-six, Environmental Abatement Services with Northwest Contracting Services, Incorporated, to renew the current contract in the funded not to exceed amount of eight million dollars. Item number nine is a resolution approving renewal to contract number one-two-four-zero-seven, Environmental Abatement Services with General Construction Services, Incorporated, to renew the current contract in the funded not to exceed amount of one million, nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Item number ten is a resolution approving extension, scope change, and increase to contract number one-two-six-four-nine, Newtonix Support and Maintenance with CDW Government LLC, to extend, expand the scope, and increase the current contract in the funded amount of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Item number eleven is a resolution awarding contract number one-two-six-one-seven, Phase Two Private Side Lead Service Line Replacement to Acuff Enterprises, Inc. in the funded amount of five million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. There is a request for same night minutes for item number eleven. Item number twelve is a resolution approving increase to contract number one-two-six-five-five, ARP Administration Engineering Services with ABEES Engineering, Inc., to increase the current contract in the funded amount of fifty thousand dollars. Item number thirteen is a resolution renewing change number three to contract number one-two-four-two-four, Waterwell Production Drilling with National Water Services, LLC, to renew the current contract in the funded amount of six million, five hundred thousand dollars. Item number fourteen is a resolution approving ratification and renewal to contract number one-two-five-one-two, Master Paving Program, Sections One and Three with Lehman Roberts Company, to ratify and renew the current contract in the funded amount of ten million, three hundred seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. Item number fifteen is a resolution approving ratification and renewal to contract number one-two-five-four-zero, Master Paving Program, Section Two with Boucan, LLC, to ratify and renew the current contract in the funded amount of six million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Item number sixteen is a resolution awarding purchase order for seven-fifty KCM cable to Universal Scaffold and Equipment in the amount of three hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars. Item number seventeen, resolution approving a lease agreement with Parma Logistics Assets, LLC for approximately one hundred and sixty thousand square feet of warehouse space located at four-four-zero-zero through four-five-zero-zero, Quality Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, in the total funded amount of two million, seven hundred four thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents. There is a request for same night minutes for item number seventeen. Item number eighteen is a resolution approving ratification and renewal to contract number one-two-five-three-two, Video Management and Hardware Maintenance with Convergent Technologies, LLC, to ratify and renew the current contract in the funded amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item number nineteen is a resolution awarding purchase order for connector set screws with engineered sealing components in the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand dollars and eighty cents. Number twenty is a resolution approving scope change, increase, and extension to contract number one-two-two-four-nine, E-Source Membership Agreement with TVPPA to E-Source Companies, LLC, to expand the scope, increase and extend the current contract in the funded amount of one million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. And our final item is number twenty-one, a resolution approving renewal to contract number one-two-five-six-six, Chartwell Membership with Chartwell, Inc., to renew the current contract in the funded amount of eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Thank you, Madam Camp Controller. One minor correction. In item nineteen, it's two hundred and eighty-three thousand and eighty dollars.
Two hundred eighty-three thousand and eighty dollars for the record. Item number nineteen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Spinosa, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Item was moved by Spinosa, seconded by Swerengen, Washington. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could call President McGowan up to answer a few questions, and I think I've already, just to answer a few questions for us, please. I would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, President McGowan.
Yes, ma'am.
The questions are centered around the lead, and I know we have same night minutes on there, but I just want to ask you just some questions that the constituents have some concern about, and we just want to clear the air so there will not be any misinformation. And my due diligence as a council member to ask these questions, and thank you for coming up.
Sure.
The first question is, who will be getting the right of entry for Phase One pilot at a twenty-three percent agreement to replace the rate?
Okay, can you repeat the question?
Okay, the question is, who is getting the right of entry? Their Phase One pilot had a twenty-three percent agreement to replace the rate.
I'm not sure I understand the twenty-three percent agreement to replace the rate. I think the question is-
That's why you're there.
Who will be getting the right of entry in the city of, or excuse me, Memphis? Like, yes, water in partnership with our contracted partner will be seeking the individual's right of entry. We have a communications plan for the six hundred homes that we have planned. We have reached out to them directly with correspondence, asking these homeowners and residents for their willingness to opt into the program. And when they opt in, they will sign a right of entry form. I think what's being referenced is during the initial pilot that we did, there was a low acceptance rate for the right of entry because it was brand new. Now I think there's better information out there, so we believe we're going to correspond with these individuals four times to make sure that they're given the opportunity to have all the information they need to opt in to have us replace the line for them.
Okay, and I think you are correct. It was only a twenty-three percent engagement rate that you had. And so are you setting up community meetings so the people can understand and know, you know, what's happening and what's the reason why behind this?
Sure. We can certainly do community meetings if we see that need, but rather than having a broader community meeting, we are targeting six hundred individual homes. These are homes that previously had the public side lead service line replaced, and they still have a private side lead service line. So very much like we did with the Weaver to Gill where there were seven hundred and twenty homes that were impacted, we're doing that same kind of engagement with the individual homeowners and residences of those homes so that they have as much information as necessary to allow us. And what they're allowing us to do is simply enter their property and replace the lead service line with a non-led service line. So we think that's going to be a recipe for success to get the acceptance rate up for these homeowners.
And there is a deadline, am I correct?
For the expenditure of this ARPA money, it's September of two thousand twenty-six. So that's why we're asking for the same night minutes to get the contract, get the contractor moving. We can still meet the deadline, but we can't waste much time in order to get this done.
Okay. And are any of the local organizations, have you all communicated or engaged with them with this process moving forward? Like YGG or POA?
Sure. We have a, two things. We had a roundtable that I hosted last fall to provide information, or excuse me, I think it was the summertime, to provide information about lead service line overall. And what our plan was, was to do the pilot and then also to do this Phase One. And we shared with them, and they've also shared with us helpful information about other sources of funding. So it's been very helpful and cooperative and collaborative. I have agreed to host another roundtable with that group who will come and provide input to us based on this Phase One. And certainly their information has been helpful. They are advocates for us to get this done. They've been advocates to help us receive additional funding from the state in the form of state revolving loan funds. So, and recently we had a community advisory council that some of those organizations were represented at, and we shared an update on lead service lines during that meeting with all of our partners. So we've had some direct correspondence with representatives of each of those organizations. So I think there's a good dialogue happening.
Right. Well, this is a question just popped in my mind as I'm talking to you and asking you these questions. Who would be responsible if there's a water break or in the future if something happens? Who responds? I just thought about that, just talking to you.
The work is warranted for one or two years, like you would have any work warranted, so the homeowner is not obligated for that. But after a period of time, it would revolve back to the homeowner, because it is, at the end of the day, a private line that would typically be the responsibility of the homeowner. But for the period of warranty after the work is done, that would be covered completely by our contractor if there's a failure in the first few years.
And that's one to two years?
I'll get the exact-
Could you get the exact?
I'll get the exact, whether it's a one or two-year warranty, and hopefully my team will text that to me while we're talking.
Yes, and that information will be shared with the six hundred homes?
Absolutely. It can be shared directly with the persons who reside at the home whose lead service line will be replacing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, President McGowan.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, President McGowan. All right, colleagues, voting screen is up for the MLGW fiscal consent. Reminder that items eleven and seventeen both have same night minutes. Please cash your votes.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item, Walker's a yes, please.
Please show Councilmember Walker his voting yes.
That item passes. Madam Camp Controller, would you please take us to our consent agenda, which would just be items three and four, and item three is held. So it'll just be item four for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On our consent agenda, we have one item is up for second reading. Ordinance number five-nine-six-five is sponsored by councilmembers Swerengen, Washington, and Carlisle. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation for this item, and I so moved.
Consent was moved by Swerengen, Washington, seconded by Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare our voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Camp Controller, please take us to our add-on agenda, starting with item thirty-four.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirty-four, if we can get it up on the board, is a resolution to accept Wolf River Bottoms Task Force Phase One Recommendations, Districts One, Two, Five, and Seven, Super District Nine. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Logan, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Smiley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
Thirty-four was moved by Smiley, seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare our voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 35.
Item number 35 is an appointment to the Memphis and Shelby County Sports Authority Board, Maya Siggers. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Dr. Easter Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met recommends approval for same night minutes, and I so move.
35 was moved by Easter Thomas, seconded by Spinosa. I have one comment card, Mr. Joe Kent. Name and address, you have two minutes, Mr. Kent.
Joe Kent, 5111 Flamingo. What is the deal with the explicit pipeline from the failed MATA board to the Sports Authority Board? Backwards, it makes no sense. It's like one has to be part of a botched public effort to get a board appointment around here. Thank you, Mr. Fulton, Michael Fulton, for your chaired MATA board leadership and subsequent MATA botch with this Sports Authority Board appointment. As far as Ms. Siggers goes, I don't care if she's a Supreme Court Justice. Siggers was part of a, of a MATA board that did not know how many people ride the bus. And I was very supportive of the new MATA board until they did nothing to include not knowing how many people ride the bus and did nothing to support increased efficiency by addressing empty bus routes. All they did was to ask for the council, come to the council and ask you for $20 million more dollars. That's all they did. Same broken system. So Siggers and the rest of the board did nothing. Therefore, stop the public botching board appointment pipeline by rejecting the Siggers appointment. Or at least, at the very least, wait a while. If you want to support public botching pipeline, just wait a while to where it's not so explicit. You know, pretend like you're not trying to do that. But really, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking you this question. Can you explain the public botching board appointment pipeline? The rationale behind it? Why is this happening? Why do we appoint people that are part of former botches and say, hey, we're going to award you with another great board appointment on the Sports Authority? It's idiotic. Thank you. Please explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Take a shot at it.
Good to see you again. Colleagues, please cast your votes for item 35. While we wait for the vote, is that Bill Dries I see sitting in the audience? Welcome back to the council chambers. You do still exist in human form. It's good to see.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 36.
Item number 36 on our add-ons is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met sends this down with no recommendation, and I so move.
Electronically, please. 36 is moved by Carlisle, seconded by Smiley. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen, Madam Comptroller. Hold the voting screen. Councilwoman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is today's item to amend the operating budget by 1.7 million? Okay, I'm sorry, where do we, where do we leave this? I thought we were going to have, we had ADC coming. What's it now? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we had five people in the queue that were upstairs and kicked them down.
Colleagues, that were in the queue upstairs, would you please re-enter yourself into the queue to ask your questions for item 36? Starting with Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I love my Logan. Thank you. I know where we left off was trying to figure out kind of the path forward for it. So I wasn't sure if we were going to try to move forward with it, if we were going to hold it, if we were going to do more discussion. I know that Councilwoman Green made the recommendation for us to go back and look at salaries. I think I said this out loud earlier, but I can't remember. Outside of the $2.2 million that was discussed, I think Councilwoman Carlisle kind of explained, hey, that's kind of re-washing the same money, and that needs to go back into fund balance. So then I would go back to the previous proposal that I had, which is for it to just come out of the overtime line item, where right now there's the $969,000. You know, if it's approved, then let it come from that space, from the overtime line item. So I'll make a motion for, for the 1.7 million plus whatever the amount for pension, I think, estimate $200,000 to come from overtime.
Do you want to wait and make your motion after the other council members speak, or do you want to go ahead and put your motion on the floor?
I'll wait until other council members speak.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, as we do budget processes, what we do is our administration makes their best faith effort to determine how much it's going to cost to run each department. That includes the number of people that are hired, their expenses, you know, how much things you want to cost in addition to their salaries. And usually, those things are not 100% accurate from the very moment that we sign off and vote on them. And what we found, at least I found when I've been on the board, is people tend to err a little bit cautiously and put in a large enough budget to do what they think they're going to need to do if they're fully staffed and they're fully doing everything. And we've not been fully staffed for quite some time. We always tend to have extra money in the budget that isn't going to be spent. That's not like finding money. It's money that was budgeted in a place and it hasn't been spent. So I don't think we're making money. We're not pulling money out of places. And what happens is every year, we go through and we need some extra funds, and people go through, and the mayor asks his staff, please look in your budget and see what you haven't spent now, and what can we get from your department, because we have this need in another department that we have to fill. And I think that's pretty much what the mayor's team told us today when they came down. They said, we've looked through the budget, here's a place we think we found money that hasn't been spent, and we would like to allocate it for the 2% raise for fire that we did not give and had talked about giving 5% for two years initially, and the council did not approve that this year. So I think we talked about it when we didn't approve it, and we gave everyone 3%. And one of the things we said was, we wanted to look at this mid-year and see if we could find money that we could replace that money for our fire department. And I think, you know, Mr. Pearson and Mary Young came down and said they think they found where they can do these funds appropriately by finding money from other parts of the budget that won't be spent. So for that reason, I would like to try to see if we could honor our previous thoughts when we made the budget and go ahead and up the fire department to the previous amount. So I would encourage my colleagues for that reasoning, realizing that all budgets are not 100% accurate from the minute you make them. You don't always spend as much as you need. Sometimes you need more. And we have to move things around, and this is one place I think we as a council will be wise to move it around. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilwoman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As chief person in the office, audience, chief, would you please come down? As chief person's coming down, I'll say a couple things. I respect the comments of Dr. Warren's. Budgets aren't accurate, they're a guiding document. You manage to them, you manage for them. They are an evolution. Chief, if you could come on over this way. And yes, they are often off target. In every industry, every business has a miss window. If we missed here by 10%, we'd miss by $80 million. Actually, I think $85 million, right? You miss by 1%, that's $8 million. You think about how much it costs to build an affordable housing unit? That's, you know, $250,000 a unit. So you start to see, you know, a million dollar miss is four affordable housing units you could have built, right? And so, again, we keep using the term budget. Budget, 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 budget. Budget, 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 budget. And that we move money around, quote, within the budget. There is one line item at the end of the year, if you want to know your fiscal health, if you didn't amend a drawdown, which is the unassigned fund balance. You may not have this, and so I apologize. If you do, I will be heavily impressed because it's good recall. Do you know what our ending unassigned fund balance has been every year since, maybe like for the last four or five years? And I guess the simple phrase is, has it increased or decreased?
Walter Person, CFO, 125 North Main, and unfortunately, I do not have recall for all the most recent years. I will say that it has decreased in the last couple of years.
Let me say this again. You can be within budget and be in the red at the same time. It's called deficit spending. Companies do it often. They then go out and look for increased sources of revenue, credit, which is a nice way of saying, a lender. We increased our revenue two years ago by raising taxes. Like, rather, we increased it artificially, so to speak. Now we're on a natural cycle. On the natural cycle, our expenses are going up. Stop conflating the budget and moving money around. At the end of the day, every year, we are having less money in our unassigned fund balance, and we continue to spend that way. Like, there is some big thing, I don't know if you caught it earlier, but the mayor basically said after five years of Mayor Strickland saying, big bucket of money at the end of the rainbow, that there wasn't that much in it. And don't worry, I caught it. Very next meeting, I plan to ask what that number looks like, and we're going to dive
Mr. Kent, if you need to talk on the phone, could you please go outside in the lobby?
I'm good, don't bother me. Everybody else's got a place to be. I know Dr. Warren's got somewhere to go. Look, this, I hate these issues because it ends up putting us against employees or an entity versus entity, when at the end of the day, we cycled in here for a bunch of a comedy of errors. But from a purely budgetary standpoint, Dr. Warren, what I wanted to conclude is, I respect your perspective on that and wanting to hear the mayor and chief person. My position in my official capacity as the budget chairman is that I wholeheartedly disagree with their position. And honestly, don't want to press into it too much out of courtesy, is the nicest measured way that I can say it. I am, however, 100% open to, like Councilwoman Green said, any solution within the current budget. Overtime would be a place, because here's the trigger. If they don't manage to overtime, guess what happens? They have to come back at the end of the year. Now, it's likely, not even likely, Walter, or excuse me, chief person has already said they're coming back with a $4 million ask. So you can't be good to the million in the same business and down $4 million in the same business at the same time. God, like, I keep spinning my wheels over and over again, and I know you all want support fire. Like, I can feel it. I know people want this huge win. I can feel it. I know that it's only $2 million. The amount of times I've heard it's the, it's only dot, dot, dot down here, is how we end up 15, 16, 20 million in the hole. It's not the big things that get us, it's the little nicks. I've said it, it's death by 1,000 cuts down here. And the last thing that I'll say, at least for me, is that I've approved almost 35% increases for fire since I've sat in this seat. If that doesn't buy me goodwill to the end of this fiscal year, I don't know what does. I want to put the entity, the city of Memphis, including its employees, ahead of all the politics. If we're serious about finding a path to this thing, we can do it. You want to know how I do it? We commission this compensation study, every employee of the city of Memphis would say, if that's an unbiased compensation study, we'll accept the results of that. Because the whole point of the compensation study is to say, are you competitive in your salary and benefits? From an expert. But yet somehow, we have a compensation study that sits shelved every year in HR, except for the non-represented employees, and then it becomes the Wild West for 60 days. I'm kind of tired of it. I know that we want to fix impasse in that process, and I fully intend to spend my time doing it. I don't know how we're going to end up, but I can't continue to go down the road. It's not in the best interest of the city. It's kind of like when we first got here, every division director used to sit down here with their senior brass. It was probably $3.5 million worth of overhead just sitting here every Tuesday. I couldn't believe it. So to land this airplane, I'm all for a solution that is in the budget, that requires the administration to administer and manage to it. By going into an unassigned fund balance or fund balance is some sort of ethereal cash. To transfer it today, you could transfer from parks. If you transfer a million bucks from park today and they manage to their budget, they're going to come ask for a million bucks at the end of the year, guarantee it. Because the money's not there. I cannot say this a different way. Like, we're flat all the way across the board, we're down. Expenses are increasing. You cannot find additional money. You can find it, quote, to budget. So I'm going to say this the last time, then I'll be quiet. To Councilwoman Warren's point, you absolutely can do it to budget. But the only reason we budgeted what we did, remember, the mayor's transferring $4.5 million from his budget into an unassigned fund balance because it was so low. But the only way that we ended up where we were is because we thought we had the expected revenues, or else I promise you, the mayor would have proposed even more for unassigned fund balance at the end of last year. So I don't want to make this some big fight between us and somebody else. This is about managing the city's money in the city's best interests, which is honestly, in the charter, one of our two jobs. Zoning, budget. We need to get back to that. I yield the floor.
Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank Budget Chair Carlisle for his comments this morning as well as today. The discussion has really, you know, brought to light some things that we've expressed all year, particularly in budget season, that the finding pockets of money is really concerning. And from, you know, discussion today, we realized that we're actually not finding pockets of money, it's money that's already been allocated or spent, or it should go somewhere or somebody else's money. So the entire process, we really are going to have to look at. But for the vote on hand, or whether we held it or held, hold it or vote today, I'm really concerned that the fund balance, you know, we just use it as a piggy bank. And we've discussed at length during the buzzer season, when we did our little round robins, I know we talked about specifically making sure that we shore that up and everybody was on board, but we seem to keep pulling from it. We do want to honor our word, honor what, you know, we said, but that was anticipating that we had real information and real numbers, and we were going to review it, thinking that we were getting current and accurate information, but we're finding out today it's not exactly what we thought it was. So, you know, we don't want to be in a position to where we have to raise taxes again, but money just can't come out of the sky. You know, our revenue comes from, the majority of our revenue comes from taxes. And if our fund balance or if we don't have enough money to pay what we need to, that's what it's going to look like. But no one in here, none of us, we don't, we don't want to have to do that again. So we really have to think about the decisions that we're making along the way. I know, you know, for this decision, the mayor has said that he's found the money, or they can take it from somewhere, and so everything will be fine, and it's just 1.7 million. And definitely, y'all want to be on one accord, but it's very concerning, the process that we are going through to get to this point. So with that, I yield back and just hope that moving forward, we can find exactly where this is going to come from. So with that, I yield back, and just hope that moving forward, we can find exactly where this is going to come from, so that we won't have to take it out of the fund balance. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Smiley.
Thank you. With due respect to every council member up here. I think, I think my position is real simple. I've been on this body since 2020, and what the council has consistently done, we pass resolutions, it'll say some appropriating language, something like, "we'll take it out to the general fund, unless the administration finds a more appropriate place." And every resolution we pass, well, significant number of resolutions we pass, we pull forth that language. And what we always do, we trust the administration to find places to support the things that this body wants. I just don't understand why, when it comes to supporting literally the best fire department in the country, we want to take a different position. If the administration says they're going to find the money, shouldn't we just trust them to find the money? It's $1.7 million. I think that they can find it, find the money. They're telling us they can find the money. For me, I'm going to support it, based, because we consistently say we trust this administration. This administration has been more forthcoming than the previous administration. They're, for the most part, they're good partners. I think we should just trust them, and also should be supporting fire in this situation. So I'm going to support, support the remainder of the budget. And I was going to call the question, but I see there's two more people in the queue, so. Yeah, I'd be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman White.
I feel like I said most of what I needed to say in committee earlier, but then after I heard Councilwoman Smiley's point of view, as she says, he always loves a good debate. Here I am, again, with what I've said at committee earlier and what I said at committee last week. We use these words, like, "we're going to find money to do this, we're going to find money." Here are the, and I'm just going to do a quick recap of just the facts. Here are the facts, and I'm going to make it quick. We sat here during budget season, and we said, "we're not, we're going to grant equally 3% raises." And I understand that there was an agreed upon 5%. I said it earlier, and I'll say it again. I am super grateful to our fire department. You all are absolutely the best. I will go and scream it from any mountaintop. And I put my weight behind it in the, in voting for the budget and voting for the raises in the two years that I've been here. This is not about gratitude, this is about governance. Here we go. We said that we need to see where our numbers are later on in the year, so that we can determine if it's fiscally responsible to grant a 2% increase later. Being good stewards of our finances, we got a quarter one report. That quarter one report revealed that we are down in projected revenue by $7 million, that we are on trend to spend more, and expenditures $10 million more than we projected. Earlier today, Chief Person said that it's not a $17 million anticipated deficit, but a $7 million one. Either way it goes, it's a deficit. We can't create money. We're not, and it's so interesting because, and I don't want to throw anyone under the bus. I never want to do that, never want to be that person, but let me say this. We keep saying, when we keep comparing things to matter, and how, like, like it's a public entity that felt like, oh, they can replace this money. What we're saying right now, or what I'm hearing, is the same thing. Just trust them to do a good job. We didn't even have the actual numbers until about 30 minutes ago. But let's just trust to do a good job. And this is no, no, no strike on the administration at all. I think that our mayor is great. I think that his staff is amazing. I think they are brilliant. I think that they can figure out a lot of things. But at the end of the day, it is our responsibility as council members to balance, to make sure that we have a balanced budget. It is our responsibility to make sure that we are keeping a hold of the purse strings. And what we know right now today is that we are trending towards a seven, at least a $7 million deficit, which I anticipate will be more, based on the rising cost across the world. Again, I am not against the raise. All I'm saying is, we need to have a definitive pocket of where it's going to come from and how, and not a "I think," or "we may," because we are not like a private entity where we can go out and increase our prices. We have limited ways, limited means for revenue, primarily property taxes. And we all know that we don't want another property tax increase. And so, just like everyone else, large corporations, if you look, they are, they are like this with their purse strings right now. A lot of people are doing cuts. And as a government entity right now, we're considering a raise. And not just a raise, but a raise on top of a raise that we had just given a few months ago. Again, not that our fire department is not deserving of it. I absolutely believe that they are. But I think that to be responsible, like I said earlier, I couldn't vote on it until I had a real number. Because it's irresponsible to say, "I'm going to grant an increase, and I don't know how much the increase will cost." So now that we have an estimate number, I'm still saying, we need to make sure that we have a clear way, a clear path to be able to make these raises happen, but without putting ourselves in a bigger deficit. So with that said, if it is the will of this body, what I would propose is that it comes from the overtime line item. That would be my proposal. But I'm open to whatever else. I just want to be clear that that's my position.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Person, could I possibly ask you to come back up? I had a couple of questions. I just want to make sure that you're getting your exercise today. I'm putting my doctor hat on here. Give you a little chance to think while you're walking up. Recently, in our county, have we had other municipalities that have raised taxes? Are you aware of them?
I believe some of the outlying, the smaller municipalities have raised taxes recently.
Like Germantown, Cogeville, and those places. Do you have any, do you remember what percentage they raised their taxes?
I think there were varying percentages, but I don't recall the exact amount, sir.
Yeah, when we brought our, your budget to us, and to Mr. Carlisle, when you brought that to the Budget Committee, and you presented it to us, it was a good faith effort to try to say how much it was going to cost, correct?
It was.
Okay. And at the end of the year, over the past two years, three years that you've been here, and even before, when you were here with Ms. Ford, did we always have departments that didn't spend all the money that was allocated to them?
Yes, there were, there were some departments that had some left. There were other departments that overshot, and we had to move money around to cover their...
So we moved money around. Did we make money? We didn't make any money, right? So we just moved the money around. How would this be different from what we did during that time? Why is this a different thing than Mr. Carlisle is more worried about?
Well, you know, I can't necessarily speak to how it would be different directly, Dr. ...
So this isn't really different from that?
All I can say is that, you know, I understand the point of view.
Yeah, I understand his point of view, too. We don't want to spend money that we can't get. You know, we don't want to have that. We don't want to, you know, at the end of the year, be in a budget deficit and lower our, you know, savings plan, you know. But the issue also is that moving this around at this time does a few things that I think helps the city, because we're in a lawsuit that we won't have legal expenses for. If we do this, those things get dropped. Our unions won't be in a position of where they're going to be pressured, I think, in the same way they are with the administration. And, you know, in my mind, I'm not sure how this is any different. And I was hoping you could tell me why it might be different. Because Mr., my colleague, Ms. Carlisle, you know, I love, is telling me that this is a different thing. This one vote is different from all those other votes that we've just taken money from different departments. So I'm wondering why it's different. And maybe you can answer that, and I'll ask Mr. Carlisle, he could, when he comes up. But I don't see how it's different. And in my mind, it seems like this solves a bunch of problems, and it's not going to change the budget deficit at the end. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I can answer that for you. What makes this different than any other time? My colleague just said something that he's been on this council for since 2020. And so what that tells me, and what that brings me to the point, is the behavior of handling money in this city has always been the same. And trying to do something different is hard for people to change. We are in different times now. This is 2025. I think my colleague, Councilwoman White and Carlisle specifically said, "we are in different times." And this is my first, this would be my second budget. But it's always about, and it's the same players, it's the same gatekeepers that comes here asking for money for a poor city. Pull the money from somewhere else. We can get it from somewhere else. But you all got to, y'all got to come differently next year budget. Because you're coming back next year. You're coming back for some more money. You're coming back. I know you're coming back. Because guess what? We're going to find the money like we always do, instead of dealing with actual numbers and facts. We are not, this is not 1968, 1970, 1972, '73, '74, '75. This is 2025. And Memphis is still rocking and rolling the same exact way. You're greedy. And you want what you want, because you think you can do it. And you're wrong. And that might not change any of that, and I don't care whether it changed, whatever, they're going to vote the way they vote. But you're wrong, 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 wrong. And God sees your intentions, and He sees your hearts, and He's going to deal with each and every one of us accordingly. I yield.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Carlisle. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I hear my colleagues, and I know it's time to get to a vote, but I will offer one amendment. If the administration is so sure that they can manage this budget, I will support it retroactively. We can call today the down date, 2%. Everybody can be paid in arrears. And I will come up with a series of metrics that you will hit at the end of this calendar year, this fiscal year. And when you hit those, which basically means you're going to do everything that you guys represented and warranted that you said you were going to do over the last two weeks you've been lobbying this body. You can pay every single firefighter their 2% with full benefits, retroactive to this date. But if you don't, you can't pay them. And you know who puts that onus on? It puts the onus on the administration to manage to the budget. I don't have to worry about going to find the money. Firefighters are set, their 2% is there, and if the administration doesn't do their job, they don't get their money. If they do, they get their money. You know who approved it? The council. We don't have anything left to do. Well, I need, I want to run this by my attorney real quick, because that was an on-the-fly deal. I don't know the legal ramifications of retroactively approving. No, but, but here, but here's the deal. Here's the deal. Here's the deal. The, I'm here, let's back up. Let me give attorney Wade a second to catch his breath. The two sides are, the two sides are, we trust the administration because they say they can do this, yet have been presented, and I mean this factually, no real hard, and I don't have a single document in front of me right now that has a hard number. I don't have a written letter from the mayor or the CFO that says, "you have our, our best faith guess estimate that we can do the following." Bam, bam, bam. I'll tell you why. Short memories down here. So, Attorney Wade, I know that we have raised and lowered salaries throughout our years with the legal right to do so. Can this body approve a salary today through a series of performance metrics for the administration that would be retroactive? So basically, they would accrue, and then pay the cash bonus out, or the cash incentive out, which would be the pay raise, at a period of time that would probably fall somewhere between 30 to 60, 90 days at the end of the fiscal year. It would account for the entirety of the benefits, the entirety of the raise, and the entirety of the ADC contribution. The only way, and the metrics would basically be, the administration has to do exactly what they said they were going to do. They're going to manage to the budget. We're going to have some windfall of cash. And I'll answer Dr. Warren's question. Jeff, when a for-profit business continues to go in their piggy bank, they go out of business. When you're a government entity, you just keep taxing the same people. You know what happens? They leave. We're down to 600,000 residents. We lost 20,000 residents over the last 10 years. So that's your economic indicator. But that is true. It is an economic indicator. It is an economic indicator. Because when you raise taxes, you're raising the tax burden on the same base, less people. So, Attorney Wade, if you had a moment, I would propose, or we can hold this for two weeks, and I can come back, which I don't, I'd rather take it today personally. But I think if you want to be fair to the taxpayers, and you want to be as responsible as you say you are, then let's make it retroactive, and the administration can come back and do what they say they're going to do.
Okay. You can condition any appropriation you want. And if you condition it to be paid after the conditions are satisfied, you can do that. So you can do exactly what you said. I think you would probably need to have some specificity, however, on these metrics that you mentioned. I don't know anything about those.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's an available option. Admittedly, I would need time. I'm not going to sit everybody and try and do this on the fly. I really don't like coming back for two weeks. But I'd much rather spend my time coming up with a reasonable, responsible solution that protects this entity and tries to meet firefighters where they are on the ground. And for the record, by the way, I didn't vote for impasse this year. So I keep saying, y'all, I know the body accepted the recommendation, but it never approved it. It just accepted it. We accept reports all the time. I just want to clear that for the record. So this idea of like, there was some sort of crawfishing is just not true. I am the budget chairman, I would know. I never voted on that. When we wrapped up the budget, Councilman Walker presented a 3% increase, and that's what the budget was approved by. It's why impasse has got to change. So, Mr. Chairman, I know this is unusual. I could make a motion and force a vote, but I will defer if you'd like to have an open conversation for a minute. Or Councilman Smiley, I mean, Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours. I'll yield it back. But I'll either make the motion today, or I'll move to hold it and bring it back with a recommendation. But I defer to you or the body.
All right. So if you're going to make a motion today, we would have to have something in writing with some metrics before we vote on it, right? Attorney Wade? So, without objection, we can hold it for two weeks, or somebody can hurriedly write some parameters, and we can vote on them tonight.
Here's another thing I'll do.
Point of order, point of order. Don't we, don't we, don't we still have the motion from Councilwoman White on the floor?
She never made it. She never made it.
All right. Smiley, you're recognized.
All right, so here's my issue with all of it. No matter what, if we decide to hold for two weeks, if we entertain Councilman Carlisle's motion, we're going to be having the same discussion in two weeks. No matter what, we'll have the same discussion in two weeks. Whether we entertain the motion in two weeks, or whether we entertain the motion now. My preference is, if we voted up or down today, that way we dispose of this matter. The body's going to do what the body's going to do. You know, we've been at it for a while now, for a considerable amount of time. Let's just dispose of it today. Whether you can make your motion, if your motion to hold passed, we'll hold for two weeks. But if your motion to hold fails, that means the body's ready to dispose of it. Let's just figure out what the body wants to do. But, you know, let's see.
All right. Councilman Carlisle, are you ready to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am. I appreciate that, and that's a very fair comment from my former chairman. So here's the deal. I will bring back, I'm going to make a motion to hold this item, and I'm going to bring back a set of parameters that I believe will be a good compromise. I recognize the body, the one thing I would take issue is that this is only the second week that this has been in front of the body. Everything else has been out in the press, and press releases. So, so let's not sit here and say we blackhammed this thing down. And again, I'm not against anybody. I want everybody up here to win. I want everybody out there to win. But eventually, we've just got to start putting some accountability features in that are not unfair. Like, don't forget where we are. Like, we put ourselves on the clock. We're going to be in budget season. The mayor's already working on his budget. He's going to present it in 120 days to the public. We're going to be in one-on-ones in less than 60 days. So the idea that you're not going to know kind of where we're going to be is crazy. So I moved to hold for two weeks. And I've got an objection from my colleague. And so, Mr. Chairman, with that, because I just don't feel, it'd be irresponsible to say that I could come up with a series of metrics that can stand behind that. So I would, that's my good faith offer, is that I'll come back with a solution to try and figure out some sort of trigger that gives police, or excuse me, that gives fire what they're looking for and some sort of certainty, and then they can hold the administration accountable. Like, that's the kicker, right? They keep coming back to us. Like, we appropriate money for MADA. It's the administration, or not MADA, but well, it could be, you know, it's the administration's job to administrate. But whenever the money's not there, they gotta come to us, and then it becomes our problem again. So what I'm saying is, it's fine. Let's appropriate the money, but it ain't gonna be my problem when the administration doesn't administrate. It's gonna be their problem. So with that, I move to hold, Mr. Chairman, for two weeks. So we'll hold in the next meeting.
All right, Carlisle's made a motion. He needs a second. All right, Madam Comptroller, would you please prepare? We can't do it without objection, right? Okay. Madam Comptroller, would you please prepare special item one, which will be a vote on the hold? White. Or Logan. I think it was White. Cooper Sutton. So special item one will be a vote on the hold. All right.
The hold, right?
This will be a vote, as soon as she goes to the voting screen, this will be a vote.
Vote to hold.
To hold.
For the metrics.
Correct.
All right.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, no. Green, no. Logan, yes. Smiley, no. Spinosa, no. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, no. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
Thank you. That item passes. This item will be held for two weeks. All right, Madam Comptroller, would you please take us to item 23 on our regular agenda?
We getting new fate curtains up here?
Item number 23 on our regular agenda is a joint ordinance of the City of Memphis and County of Shelby County, Tennessee, enacted pursuant to the Community Redevelopment Act of 1988 and the Uniformity and Tax Increment Financing Act of 2012, providing for the amendment of the Cleveland Street Corridor Redevelopment Trust Fund. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5960 is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas.
Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Are you okay? Can you move it?
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll be recusing from this matter as I'm special counsel for the county commission.
Please, Chair, White is a recusal. Councilwoman Dr. Easter Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say to the folks over there on our right-hand side, if y'all can wave y'all's hands that are waiting on this, we're really looking forward to, after this snafu is done, the great developments that y'all are gonna bring to the Cleveland area through the TIPS. So very happy to have put this back forth and to support this, and we're just looking forward to what the crosstown development and CRA is gonna do in this area. Thanks, y'all. I just wanted to say thank y'all.
All right. Item was moved by Green, seconded by Easter Thomas. Seeing no other members in the queue, please take us to our voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, recused. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 24.
Item number 24 is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 5595, Title V, Chapter 40 of the Memphis Municipal Code, to renew the Memphis Tourism Improvement District. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5961 is sponsored by the administration.
Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
24 was moved by Carlisle, seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 25.
Item number 25 is a joint ordinance amending the 2021 Memphis and Shelby County Building Code so as to amend storm shelter requirements for educational buildings and add a new appendix related to optional middle-scale housing construction requirements. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5962 is sponsored by the administration.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation for this item, and I so move.
25 was moved by Swerengen, Washington, seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
I'm recusing.
Hold the voting screen for a second. Councilwoman White?
I did. I clicked it on here, but I needed to say it vocally that I'm recusing from number 25 as it's a joint ordinance and I'm special counsel for the county commission.
Okay. Note, White as a recusal, and you can go ahead and release the voting screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, recused. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item 26.
Item number 26 is also a joint ordinance amending the 2021 Memphis and Shelby County Existing Building Code so as to amend storm shelter requirements for educational buildings and optional middle-scale Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes as amended. Madam Comptroller, please call item 29.
Item number 29 is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate Port Security Grant Program Funds from the Department of Homeland Security Operations Safety in the amount of $955,811 to purchase a rescue fire boat. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
29 was moved by White, seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 30.
Item number 30 is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate assistance to firefighters grant program funds from the Department of Homeland Security Operations Safety in the amount of $76,960.36 to be used for the purchase of 120-powered suction devices. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
30 was moved electronically. Madam Comptroller, we don't have 30 on the screen. All right. All right. 30 was moved by White, seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 31.
Item number 31 is a resolution to approve inter-agency response automatic aid agreement between the Memphis Fire Department of the City of Memphis and Bolero Refinery Fire Department, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
31 was moved by White, seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Yes, that's correct.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item 32.
Item number 32 is a resolution to approve inter-agency response automatic aid agreement between the Memphis Fire Department of the City of Memphis and Federal Express Rule Metro Fire Department, District 3, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
32 was moved by White, seconded by Spinosa. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen. Members, please cast your votes for 32.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Canaly, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item 33.
Item number 33 is a resolution amending the task force on city employee compensation and directing the preparation of a compensation review package. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman White.
Councilwoman Dr. Easter Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Item number 33 is a resolution amending the task force on city employee compensation and directing the preparation of a compensation review package. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman White.
Councilwoman Dr. Easter Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
33 was moved by Easter Thomas. Will you move it again, please? Seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Spinosa, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canaly. Chairman Canali, yes. Yes.
That item passes. Colleagues, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And to the same night minutes, I believe. Madam Vice Chair has those ready?
Thank you, Chair. Our same-night-minute items are items 11, 17, 34, 35. Just those four. Items. 36 was held. Once again, that's 11, 17, 34, and 35. And I so move.
Same-night minutes moved by Swearengen Washington, seconded by Warren. Seeing no members in the queue, please take us to the voting screen. Members, please cast your votes for same-night minutes.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Please show council members. Spinosa is voting, yes. Warren, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. All right, colleagues, that brings us to our public comment portion. Kristen Fox Troutman, you're up first. Name and address. For the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, good evening, Chair and members of the council. My name is Kristen Fox Troutman, Executive Director of Samaritan Counseling Centers of the Mid-South. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about our FY community grant application, and to thank you for your past support of our work. For nearly 45 years, Samaritan has provided high-quality affordable mental health care to Memphis residents. This past year, nearly nine out of 10 of the 3,200 counseling sessions we provided were subsidized by charitable contributions to make care accessible for those who are uninsured or underinsured. The need in our city for mental health care continues to grow. Tennessee ranks a deplorable 43rd in the nation for access to mental health care. Cost is one of the major barriers. The average counseling session in Tennessee is about $130 to $150. And nearly 50% of psychotherapists in Tennessee do not accept insurance for payment. As a result, nearly half of adults and children with a diagnosed mental health condition go without care. Your investment helps change that. Samaritan's model is built on affordability and access. We accept multiple insurance plans, including Ten Care, offer a sliding scale fee structure, and raise funds to offset low-fee sessions through our client-assisted assistance program. We also work across the city through partnerships in Frazier, South Memphis, Downtown, Midtown, and East Memphis. Bring services directly to communities with the greatest need. And our free mental health Lunch and Learn series continues to engage and educate hundreds of Memphians on issues like trauma, loneliness, and teen mental health. Today, we respectfully request $50,000 from the City Council Community Grant